Hey, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the October 8, 2019 Board of Commissioners meeting. At this point, we're blessed to have Amjad Tofiq from the Islamic Center West Cobb lead us on our invocation, and firefighter Cody LaPrade from Station 10 Bravo Ship leads in the President's Allegiance. So those who are willing and able, please stand.
God Almighty, guide us among those whom you have guided right, and preserve us among those who you have preserved. Take us for friends among those who you have befriended. Bless us in that which you have bestowed upon us; guard us from the evil of that which you have allowed; for it is you who ordain, and none can ordain anything against you. And never is he abused whom you befriend. God Almighty, we come to you asking to bless our world with peace, help us find peace, truth, and well-being in the worlds. Peace and security between nations, tribes, and races; peace and sincerity in our hearts and minds. God Almighty, lead us from death to life, from falsehood to truth, from despair to hope, from fear to trust, from hate to love, and from war to peace. And let peace fill our hearts, our world, our soul, and our humanity. Amen.
Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank you both for starting out our program this morning. All right, well, we have a number of presentations, so I'd like the Board to join me down front as we present a proclamation designating the week of this week as Public Safety Appreciation Week in Cobb County. I'm sorry, Randy, if you could bring your people up. Well, get over here, come on, come on, guys, come on up here, come up here, come up here, all right? Come up here. Okay. Well, they're normally not this shy, but, you know. Well, this is a very special day, and I know the Board joins me and want to hear the words of this really incredible proclamation for these terrific heroes of the county. Whereas Cobb County's public safety personnel are committed to the service and protection of the citizens and visitors of our community, and have a superior reputation for excellence. These men and women are the first to respond during a crisis, often placing their own lives at risk in the performance of their duties. And whereas, the Cobb County Police Department is a full-service law enforcement agency, nationally accredited by the Commission on the Accreditation of Law Enforcement Agencies since 2005. And whereas the Cobb County Sheriff's Office protects the court system, operates the adult detention centers, services to Cobb and the cities of Acworth, Kennesaw, and Powder Springs, and is accredited by the Commission on... I'm sorry, I apologize, I got the wrong paragraph. This is what happens if you have font size two, and I don't have my glasses. Whereas the Sheriff's Department protects the court system, operates adult detention centers, provides tactical operations support, and serves civil processes and criminal warrants with Sheriff Warren, named Georgia's top sheriff in 2014. Whereas, the Cobb County Fire and Emergency Services, I apologize, provides fire, rescue, and emergency services to Cobb County, the cities of Acworth, Kennesaw, and Powder Springs, and is accredited by the Commission on Fire Accreditation International since 2005 with an ISO rating of one. And whereas, the Cobb County Emergency Communications Department is a multi-jurisdictional consolidated dispatch center accredited by CALEA since 2002. The department was awarded the Certificate of Meritorious Accreditation in 2017. And whereas, the Cobb County Emergency Management Agency is responsible for coordinating all activities necessary to protect Cobb's residents from natural, technological, and man-made disasters and other emergencies that threaten the county. And whereas, the Cobb County Animal Services provides housing and care for homeless animals and enforces state laws and county ordinances pertaining to animal control and management. And whereas, Cobb County remains committed to having the best-trained professionals, state-of-the-art equipment, and superior resources, thus maintaining the highest standard of excellence a resident expects. Public Safety Appreciation Week is an opportunity for the community to show our gratitude and respect for their service, bravery, and dedication. Now therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, hereby proclaim the week of October 7 through 13, 2019, as Public Safety Appreciation Week, and encourage all residents and businesses to unite with us as we honor the work of our brave men and women of public safety this eighth day of October, 2018, signed by all members of the Board. Chief, congratulations, the Board of Commissioners.
Well, first of all, I want to thank the Board for taking the opportunity to set aside the week of, first week of October to recognize our first responders. And in addition to the folks that you see standing up here, I want to say that we work very closely with the courts, other outside agencies, all the city police departments, the other fire departments within the county. But I know that this meeting is focused on the group that the Board of Commissioners oversee along with the Sheriff's Office. But as you can see, it takes a team, and from the initial dispatch for that call-taker, who takes that call from that hysterical person, if you've never been in that setting, then it's hard to imagine, down to the dispatcher who dispatches the units, and then to the units who are responding. And then, once we get that headed in a good direction, the hospitals who take over our patients, we have a great network with them and relationship with them. And as you can see, it does, it takes a team. To our two outside ambulance zone providers, Puckett and Metro, I can't tell you enough how fortunate we are in Cobb County to have top-quality transport ambulance providers in this county. For all the men and women who are not standing up here, who are out there getting the job done as we're having this meeting, I just want to say thank you to all of you. And I hope that you grasp the magnitude of the accolades that are contained in this proclamation, from the accredited agencies to the ISO-1. I don't think you will go anywhere in the country and find a public safety organization as strong and as healthy as Cobb County. And so with that, I can't tell these folks how much I appreciate what they do day in, day out. I know the Board appreciates what you do day in, day out, and even more so the citizens. I was in a, had a public speaking engagement last night down in South Cobb, and for those people down there to understand that they're partnering with us because it does take a community, we're only limited with a certain amount of effectiveness as responders, but the relationships that we build in the community oftentimes take us to a place that otherwise we couldn't get if we weren't building those relationships. So with that, for all of you, I say thank you for what you do every day doing your job. For those that are out there in the street doing the job today, I say thank you. For those who are on their way home after a long night last night, I say thank you. And again, to the Board, I just want to say thank you for taking this opportunity to recognize our public safety officials. And lastly, I want to thank 911 Director Destiny Davidson. She was the Chair of this year's Public Safety Chamber of Commerce Breakfast. Yesterday, did an outstanding job in organizing all that, so Destiny, thank you. Again, Board, thank you very much.
So I'd like each one of you to tell us your name, where you grew up, a little of your life story. Of course, you know I'm joking. So let's get, we get the Board over here, and we'll take the photograph this way today this morning. Does that work for you?
If we need tall folks in the back, you're shorter than the person right here, move forward. Everyone needs to squeeze in. Everyone on this side needs to move toward the center. All right, all right, there we go. Oh, you're never going to get up, you're going to be down there forever. Couple more, you're done. Thank you.
Morning again.
Good morning. We have a much smaller group.
All right, so we have another proclamation for another incredible group in Cobb County. Whereas Cobb County Habitat for Humanity was founded in 1985 by Chris Street with support from Catholic, Episcopal, Methodist, and Presbyterian church groups. It expanded to Douglas and Paulding Counties in 2008 and changed the name to Habitat for Humanity for, of Northwest Atlanta, Northwest Metro Atlanta. And whereas, it is an ecumenical Christian housing ministry that brings together volunteers from all faiths and nonbelievers to build and renovate houses for low- and moderate-income families. And whereas, World Habitat Day was established by the United Nations General Assembly to promote the idea that everyone deserves a better future. Having a decent place to live can remove barriers to opportunity, health, and success that might have been part of a family's life for years, and in many cases, for generations. It is unacceptable that more than 18 million U.S. households pay half or more of their incomes on their places of residence. And whereas, to date, 510 houses have been built or renovated, giving shelter to more than 1,600 family members, fulfilling the organization's mission of seeking to put God's love into action by bringing people together to build, renovate, or repair homes, communities, and hope. Now therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize World Habitat Day in October and honor Habitat for Humanity of Northwest Metro Atlanta for all its efforts to uplift our community, given this eighth day of October, 2019, signed by all members of the Board. Jessica, congratulations to your group.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you to the Board of Commissioners, we appreciate it, and to all of the leadership of Cobb County. It's nice to be back up here, and I'm not talking about senior fees. I do want to just acknowledge public safety. This is a tremendous week, and I had the honor of being at the Public Safety Breakfast yesterday, and I think it just means a lot for us to be able to celebrate World Habitat Day alongside Public Safety Week. And I say that because affordable housing is one, affordable housing is one of those things that people think of, you didn't make good choices, and that is not what it is. And when you look at a lot of our entry-level public safety officials, the people that take care of our children and educate them, they're actually folks that live in our homes and our communities. We also support people who are seniors on fixed incomes, they have a lot of repairs that they need, and Habitat does that for them. And we revitalize neighborhoods. Neighborhoods need to have, they have blighted properties that need some uplifting. And so coming in and being able to serve the Cobb, Douglas, and Paulding communities is, means a lot to us, it means a lot to be supported by the leadership here, and we just hope that you will continue to support us, and thank you. And I want to introduce, can I introduce our group? This is our Board Chair, Michael Christian, our Board Secretary, Sharon Marshall, and Felicia Lingo, she is also a former Cobb County employee, she came on over with me. This is Lisa Letner, Terry Miller, and Craig Theman. So thank you for having us today.
And then the last one here is the representative from the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League, representatives from there, am I here this morning? Okay, if not, I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation anyhow. Communities across America have been plagued by many problems caused by illicit drug use and those who traffic them. There is hope in winning the war on drugs, and that hope lies in education and drug demand reduction, coupled with the hard work and dedication of organizations such as the Young Marines of the Marine Corps League. Of the Marine Corps League. Community support is one of the most effective tools in this effort to result, to reduce the use of illicit drugs. To encourage a drug-free lifestyle, involvement in drug print prevention, and reduction efforts, the Red Ribbon Campaign was established by Congress in 1988. And whereas, October 23rd to the 31st of 2019 has been designated as National Red Ribbon Week, and Americans are encouraged to wear red ribbons to show their support for a drug-free environment. The symbol was chosen to commemorate the work of Enrique "Kiki" Camarina, a drug enforcement agent who was murdered in the line of duty. The red ribbon represents the belief that one person can make a difference. And whereas, the mission of the Young Marine Program is to help develop good citizenry and promote a healthy, drug-free lifestyle in our youth. Drug awareness and education are vital and key elements, and the Young Marines fight against illicit drug use and trafficking in our communities. Now we, they, now, therefore, we, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 23rd to the 31st of 2019 as Red Ribbon Week in Cobb County, and encourage all residents to show their support during this special observance, signed this eighth day of October, 2019, by the entire Board. So thank you for listening to that proclamation, and wear your red ribbon at the end of, at Okay, Bill, I believe we have members here for public comment?
Yes, sir, we have three.
Okay.
The first one is Dana Johnson, I believe it is.
Could you let us know who you are and where you live?
Yes, sir, Dana Johnson, with the Cobb Chamber of Commerce, a happy resident of Cobb County and East Cobb.
Welcome, Dana.
Thank you very much, and I just wanted to come in briefly, thank the Board for considering the agenda item today as it relates to Dobbin's Reserve Base and sponsorship of joint use on that particular facility. This is an excellent opportunity for us to show our support for our military community as this will have great benefits for Dobbin's as they continue to try to create joint partnerships that will allow them to effectively and efficiently operate and stay being a strong and vibrant entity within Cobb County. And I just wanted to encourage you to, to hope that you have a positive reaction to that agenda item, and I just wanted to let you know that us, the Chamber, and representatives from Congress and Letterman's Office are here to show our support and let us know that we are here to support Dobbin's and here to support economic development in Cobb. Thank you all very much.
And I believe Senator Isaacson and Senator Prosser also are in support of this resolution.
Yes, sir, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, I need to paint a picture for you guys today.
Excuse me, Ms. Wilson, just let us know who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm Denny Wilson, I'm a over 30-year resident of the city of, I mean, unincorporated area of Austell. But I need to paint a picture for you guys today because I've sent you guys various emails, and it seems to be falling on deaf ears, especially my commissioner. I live in District 4. This slide that's there, up there right now, is a piece of property that was annexed into Smyrna, 18.7 acres, that was taken away from unincorporated Austell unbeknownly to the residents of the area, and that's been happening quite frequently. I brought this to the Commissioner's attention, she and I have gone back and forth with this, and I've just not gotten any, any, I mean, any comments or anything from her. But the issue is, I believe, the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority.
We're just scrolling the picture down, Ms. Wilson, so we can see the whole.
Well, I just wanted them to see that it was 18.7 acres of land that was annexed from unincorporated Austell, the Buckner Road area into the city of Smyrna. And I'm done with that picture, but I have three more maps here that I would like to show you guys because this is concerning the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority. This is the first map, which was originated in 1982. It drew the boundaries for the South Cobb Development Authority, which was the area of that little, I think the blackened area that's darkened is the area that they were going to delete and take away from the South Cobb Development Authority, and the little shaded area is areas that was added. And I think this was in 1982, it was revived again in 2001. This is one that was revived in 2002 where they added Fontaine and Fontaine Road, which is off of Floyd Road, and Floyd Road was not included in there, but Floyd Road was included in this 2002 edition for this map. And the third and final map is the map that was submitted by the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority with Doug Stoner as the chairman. Doug Stoner passed Senate Bill 266 in 2013 that increased the boundaries of the South Cobb Development Authority and changed the name to the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority. And what he did when he changed the boundaries, he changed it so that we touched the boundaries of Smyrna. And as he told me, annexation can occur if you border a city, and you don't have to go to the state to get approval. I think the approval has to come from the Board of Commissioners, I could be wrong on that, but I'm believing that's what he said. But at the time that he changed those boundaries, he was, he stepped down, well, he lost in the Senate, he lost to Hunter Hill. But he, then he became a Ward 6 council member, and he chaired the Community Development Board, the Annexation, Economic Development, and Redevelopment Board. And at that time, he orchestrated the deal to annex Riverview Landing, which belonged to Mableton into Smyrna. So what I need you guys to realize here and now today is we're losing land left and right. I mean, I also found out that there were land over near the Lions Club off of Veterans Memorial. Some little pieces of that behind there has also been annexed into Smyrna. And from what the email that Doug Stoner sent me is saying that Smyrna is trying to annex the eastern and the western boundaries of the east-west connector, which would bring it all the way back to Veterans Memorial, which would take away our economic engine. And Commissioner Cupid, I've told you that, I've told you that time after time in several emails, and I've not gotten an answer from you, I've not, I mean, you've just not heard us. But we can't afford to lose that economic engine of that east-west connector because that's what drives us.
Chairman, I don't mind responding to Denny, but for public comment, all comments are to be directed to the Chair.
But you're the Commissioner.
It doesn't matter, that's the construct of public comment, all comments are to be directed to the Chair.
Because it's, because it's pertaining to you, I understand, and it's just that you've done our community, I understand.
It's, it's a matter, it's a matter of protocol.
I understand, I understand. And my last piece of, my last information, this is a lawsuit that was done back in 1991, I believe, where there were two residents where Smyrna was trying to annex into unincorporated Austell and was trying to take their property. They took it all the way up to the Supreme Court because they said that the annexation that Smyrna was...
Ms. Wilson, I'm sorry, your time's up.
Where it should have been null and void, and they won, so they were not able to annex the property, thank you.
And one other thing, Ms. Wilson, the, the agenda item says 12.7 acres, that's on the non-objection with, with the city of Smyrna, so.
Well, the paper said 18.7.
Okay. But anyway.
It said 18.7, and your letter said 18.7.
Will we, excuse me, Chairman, will we come to consent regarding Smyrna's annexation? I'll just ask that we pull it so we can have discussion around the annexation process so it can be made very clear. And just for a comment, I would like to add that I've received no correspondence from Denny Wilson regarding this annexation.
We'd have to have a motion to pull it. I guess my question is, since this is a non-objection, there isn't really much that we're going to be able to add to that by pulling it from the agenda.
Just for discussion when we get to consent.
Okay, well, I'm willing to have the discussion before we call the voters, will that work with you?
That'll work, thank you.
The next speaker is Monica Delancy.
Good morning, Monica Delancy, Riverside Community, Austell, Georgia. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you this morning. Thank you to the group that is focusing on the Magnolia Crossing development. There needs to be a committed group on development in the South Cobb area, and, and thank you for taking time to do that. I would like to recognize a couple of events, conferences, and summits that took place in the last month. In September, Walter Communities hosted a poverty summit at Roswell Church. The summit was organized by Walter Communities, and in attendance was majority, you know, Walton staff, nonprofits, churches, Commissioner Cupid attended as well. And at the focus was housing, and the cost of housing and its impact on families. There was activity that everybody was able to do, which gave you a spreadsheet of having income of roughly $1,400 a month. And on that spreadsheet, you had to pay rent, and rent was $925, right? And left from there, you had to decide... And left from there, you had to decide on what you was going to pay with your remaining. Where are you going to pay car insurance, childcare, car note, cellphone, birthday presents for your children, field trips for your children, okay? And that was very, I like the fact that Walton Communities, which does a very good job of bringing in multifamily housing for families, but I like the fact they were able to bring this to the forefront because as the young lady just spoke for Habitat for Humanity, public servants and educators are struggling. So therefore, you know that our workers who are making minimum wage or even ten dollars an hour are struggling. So definitely, I would like to, I will email that out to you, that activity, because it was an eye-opening experience. And also, last week, I want to thank Mr. Michael Murphy for facilitating the Cobb Housing Forum at Vine's Bank. And also to Chairman Boitz for leading the call of action to eradicate homelessness. But who were attendants at this meeting was, again, nonprofits. Church leaders were the attendants at the meeting. I did send an email addressing that companies who are in Cobb County as were the employers, they were missing from the meeting because we needed them in the room so they could discuss why is it that they are paying their employees low wages, but then again, we want them to live in Cobb County or close enough to their job that they can get there at a reasonable time. So it needs a balance. So employees and companies were missing from that forum last week. But this brings me to a meeting that took place last Friday, October the fourth. And this meeting was a meeting that, you know, you have to attend if you don't want your things put out in the street. So it's eviction court. And it's held on Tuesdays and Fridays, but last Friday, October the fourth, at nine AM, eviction court at Cobb Mansion Court, there were a hundred and fifty people on the docket. And you know who was in attendance at that meeting. I tell you, most of the people that go to eviction court are African-Americans here in Cobb County. And also, most of the people that's on the case on the dockets are people that's making low wages. The residents that are in eviction court, they have children. They are searching for housing to fit their budget, which really does not exist. And so we asked the question, how do you advocate for our children in the schools? How do we do that if we're not stabilizing our communities, we're not stabilizing our household? Then it's only so much we're going to do in the schools. And it shows that a lot of our schools, especially in the South Cobb area, are transient. And there's a struggle to get parent involvement, but you can't get parent involvement if the home life is not stabilized. I'm not thinking about what's going on in the schools if my lights are off, if I don't have transportation, and if I'm getting evicted every other day. And so therefore, it's not about financial responsibility because, again, you know, we would like for teachers to make a hundred thousand dollars a year, but they don't. We would like for our police officers to make a hundred thousand dollars a year, they don't. But then we do need retail workers. We do need support staff in our hotels and our hospitals. But yet, they're not making a hundred thousand dollars a year. They're not even making twenty-five dollars an hour. So yet, we need these employees, but we need also a place to live for everybody. So again, I just want to thank you and thank you for the time to speak today. Monica Delancey.
Thank you, Mr. Delancey. Sure, that concludes our speakers. Good day.
All right, we're going to go on to consent, and I know there's two commissioners that have some comments at least about the consent. So what I'd like to do is go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent agenda, get a second, and then we'll open the floor for discussion, okay? So with that, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda. We have a second. All right, so.
We have one correction in the minutes.
Okay. All right, so on the minutes, I'll tell you what we'll do. So when we scroll down the consent agenda, when we get to number forty-two, that reflected the vote last meeting on the recommendation on the nomination of Professor, Dr. J.C. Bradbury, Development Authority, Cobb County. That vote for that was three to one with Commissioner Ott in absence. So just that would be the change to that, make sure everybody gets that vote correct. And that'll be number forty-two on the consent agenda. So I'd like the consent agenda, we scroll down the consent agenda first, okay? So people know what we're talking about. When we have the commissioners make the comments, and then I'll open up the floor to discussion, starting with Commissioner Ott and then down to Commissioner, Commissioner Cupid and anybody else that wants to talk too also. All right, so I'll start with Commissioner Ott. Okay, all right. Number four. Okay, Commissioner Cupid? And would you like to have, since you're going to talk about the annexation, would you like to have Jessica Gill come up?
Yes, actually, I would. Usually, we reserve, usually, we pull an item from consent for discussion, so this is a little bit out of order, but if you don't mind, I just want to be able to have the process explained of annexation in this item.
Okay. Because I just, Commissioner Ott has a comment on number four.
Sure.
Okay. As we're talking on the annex, okay, well, I'm going to let Commissioner Cupid lead that discussion. Ms. Gwen, if you'd come up, please. I know that. I know that. I thought you were having an issue with number four.
So do you want my comments on the annexation?
No, we'll wait for Commissioner Cupid until we get that, and then we can comment on number nineteen, which is the consent of the issue that we had handled after the session.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jessica. In dealing with the annexation that's in the city of Smyrna for the twelve point seven acre tract that's in Buckner, I spoke with a member of your staff regarding this matter. Can you help me in just providing, and help the audience in just providing a general background on annexation and what provides a city the authority to annex property?
Yes, absolutely. Good morning, Commissioners Jessica Gwen, Community Development. As you know, we looked at this particular annexation and we looked at it closely with the county attorney's office. Whenever a city submits an annexation request, at that point, you know, we have certain criteria by which we have to review it, and there's only certain reasons that we can object to an annexation request. Ultimately, there's got to be some sort of financial burden to the county that would result in the annexation, and that's not something where we could make that case here. Also, it's not creating any kind of unincorporated islands. The future land use and the use that was proposed are consistent with our current future land use here in Cobb County. So again, only certain things that we can object to, and all of this is based on state legislation and also our House Bill forty-nine agreements with the cities. So we are very limited in the reasons that we can object to an annexation.
Yes, so just to underscore that, there was some consideration given toward this particular request. And I was concerned that it fell outside of the forty-nine framework, that Smyrna was asking for additional density than what was allowed in the future land use map. But in our House Bill forty-nine agreement, there's a table that identifies which zoning categories can be permitted by the city when they have a request for annexation. And their density request did fall within that table that articulates Cobb County's ongoing agreement with the city of Smyrna. So this provided, for me, grounds to not object to it because the request was consistent with our ongoing agreement. I know the public gets frustrated when they don't see Commissioners sign off to object, but we cannot be arbitrary about this, and we're very limited in the criteria that we can consider, which Jessica provided. The way our state law is, it's very generous to the cities to enable them to annex. If we're adjacent, if a property is adjacent to a city and they desire to annex, as long as it meets criteria to annex, they have the ability to do so under a framework. This is not really a decision that's based on any individual. As I hear individuals being called out for orchestrating these matters, they do not, no individual has the ability to authorize or orchestrate such an annexation. It's tied to a very extensive and elaborate framework that we consider on an annual basis with our cities to look at that criteria for annexation. Thank you, Jessica. I appreciate you being here today and helping to explain that.
Alicia Burrow.
In our book, both annexations, the one in District One and the one in District Four, are both twelve point seven acres. Is that correct?
I can confirm that that's the correct acreage. I'll be glad to take a look at that.
I'm sorry. The one in District One is twelve point four and twelve point seven. So the paper made a mistake.
Yeah, the screen, the screen, the screen as you read it on consent agenda items is correct. And the agenda item printed in the book for the commissioners is correct also. It's twelve point four for Commissioner Gamble's and Commissioner Gamble's area and twelve point seven in Commissioner Cupid's area. So make sure if there's any, you know, the authorized document is what the agenda item is, and that's what we go by, all right? Now, Commissioner Ott, have you got a comment?
Yes. All right, a couple of things. First off, I know the speaker said that the county is losing property. The county, the land never leaves the county. The property owner, regardless of whether it's in the city or unincorporated part of the county, they still pay county property taxes. There are very few things that do not come to the county with, after an annexation. They are basically zoning fees and business license fees. So the county is not losing out on the property tax money. There is a very well documented or published objection by the county to an annexation with the city of Marietta. But that is under the very strict guidelines, like you heard from Jessica and Commissioner Cupid, as to what the county can object to. And in that case, it's the density. It's not the use, but it's mainly the density as to why that one's being objected to. As was stated, in most annexation cases, the state law is written to the benefit of the city. And if you think about the fact that most of the state is rural and usually has one city, the annexation laws are written to the benefit of the city so that as necessary, the city can expand to, you know, basically, get the property that they need for the city to operate. Cobb is different because we have six cities, but the fact of the matter is the land does not leave the county. They still pay property taxes.
Can I get Ms. Gwen to come back up for a second, please? No, I'm sorry. This is. Would you, Ms., would you mind giving like two or three examples of what it is the county could object to? That might help out. This is like, it states it's a non-objection. In other words, as Commissioner Ott says, the state law is very clear about what is we can object to and that the state law is written clearly in favor of cities. So could you just give some examples of what we could object to if somebody asked for an annexation and they claim that it's not objectionable, but in fact, we thought there'd be grounds for objection?
Yes, absolutely. And the first one that Commissioner Cupid gave was, as she alluded to, the density. For instance, if a property in the county was low-density residential and it was designated on the future land use map and tended to be low-density residential, maybe one or two units an acre, and someone came in and said, we want to annex this and we want to put apartments here, that would be something where the density would be much different. Or if there was, let's say it's a residential future land use and Smyrna wants to annex it for high-intensity industrial uses, again, that would be something that would be objectionable. Some other examples include if it was going to create an unincorporated island where, you know, perhaps they've already got city of Smyrna or Marietta or whatever city is over here, and then over here, they're going to annex some more property and there's going to be a pocket that's still in the county. That would be objectionable. I spoke earlier to financial burden on the county. And this one's a little difficult for us to prove because of the way that the county's taxes are shared. But if the proposed use is going to put a burden on the county where we're going to, you know, have to provide a lot of additional services, that we're going to increase the cost to the county, those are some other examples where we would have grounds for objection.
Okay, well, thank you. I appreciate that. Thanks very much. Okay, so, you know, the bottom line is, we're going to have to agree to disagree. But at least we have some facts out there, and hopefully with this in discussion, we'll be able to move forward in the future and, you know, continue to do what we do up here, which is try to serve the best interests of the community as a whole. So with that, is there any other questions about the consent agenda items? With that, I'll call a question. Passes five to zero. I'm sorry. I make a motion to pass the consent agenda as revised because we had to change the minutes. Right, okay, so with that, let's call a question, all right? Passes five to zero.
Another day.
My failure to bring human to the board has failed again. You can always keep trying. All right, we have on the regular agenda now, we have Superior Court and Mr. Sharon, Tom Sharon from the.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Superior Court has a agenda item we'd like to propose to the board.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tom Sharon from the Superior Court. I, first of all, want to thank all the Board of Commissioners on behalf of the employees of Cobb County for the four percent salary increase. I know from my staff, it's much appreciated, and they wanted me to convey that to the Board of Commissioners. This really follows on the heels of it. I'm here today to request the same four percent raise for our ten Superior Court judges and the district attorney. As the commissioners may or may not know, the larger percentage of the salary of the constitutional officers, being the Superior Court judges and the district attorney, comes from the state of Georgia. They are considered state of Georgia employees. For many years, the Cobb County has allowed the district attorney and the ten judges to receive a supplement to their pay based on the heavy caseload and the population of our community. In past years, until 2014, the district attorney, because that's what I was, in the position I was in for many years, and the judges, were in the kind of unseemly and sometimes unpopular position of having to either go down to the legislature every year and ask for an increase to either match the salary increases that Cobb County employees were given as a result of the Board of Commissioners. And it became a political issue. And quite frankly, you, the Board of Commissioners, said, this is something we should decide. So in 2014, the legislature passed an act whereby salaries on constitutional officers, district attorneys, and judges could be set by the Board of Commissioners, negating the. the, trooping down every legislative session of the elected officials to speak with the delegation. So, that's the history of where we are. Since 2014, then, it has, it has been in the breast of the Board of Commissioners. So, we're asking today that the Superior Court judge and the district attorney receive the four percent raise that county employees got on their entire salary. The reason for that is that there are other judges of other courts of lesser jurisdiction whose full salary is compensated by the Board of Commissioners. So, if you do simple math, four percent of a salary that is greater paid by the Board of Commissioners to a court of lesser jurisdiction would mean that, over the years, the largest court, the only court of jurisdiction that handles major cases, those salary levels would decrease or minimize over those courts that have full salary paid by the Board of Commissioners. So, we are asking that the Board of Commissioners approve the four percent salary raise based on the full salary of Superior Court judges and district attorney.
Okay. Could you once again talk about that 2014 issue? I missed that part.
Excuse me?
2014, the board agreed?
Yes, the board did agree.
Okay, so, was that a policy, or?
That was actually an act passed by the legislature.
Okay, and then, and the act said that the board would be responsible for?
For setting any increases to the salary for the constitutional officers.
Okay.
But not on the state portion?
Pardon me?
Not on the state portion. The board does not raise the state portion of the pay.
No, not the state portion. The state portion is set by legislative act.
Right, which is a larger portion of their pay comes from the state, and that is still set by the state.
That's correct, Commissioner.
Right. So, the county would be responsible for the supplement portion of it?
That's correct.
That's what you're talking about, okay. I just want to make sure about that.
Yeah.
Of the salary, right. Okay, so...
What we're talking about is the increments.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Correct.
And we're simply asking that it be based on the entire salary of the Superior Court judges, ten Superior Court judges, and also the act includes the district attorney.
Okay, so, I'm going to go and make a motion, have a second, and then we'll have a discussion about this, all right? So, I move to authorize the four percent merit raise that has been given to all county employees and to allow the Superior Court judges to receive four percent of their complete salary. All right, so now we have discussion. And the district attorney, correct, thank you. So, Commissioner Otte?
All right, Ms. Sharon, first question. Governor Kemp just gave a raise to a lot of the state employees. Did the Superior Court judges get a raise?
No, they did not.
Okay. And we talked about the state portion. I agree with giving a raise on the county portion. I just, as I have in the past, have a problem with giving the four percent on the state portion. To me, that's a state function. It's, that's a salary set by the state, and if they should get a raise, it should come from the state.
Commissioner Burrow?
Good morning.
Good morning.
When we met, you, you are one of the judges, reflected that in, I think, sixteen years, y'all have had one raise from the state.
That's correct, Commissioner.
And I understand Commissioner Otte's point as far as the salary from the state and our supplement. However, when we look at raises for law enforcement, we have parity with sheriff, and even though he's a constitutional officer, we have to all be on the same page. And I'm thankful that the state pays the majority of the judges' salary, and I support the four percent for the total salary of the judges and the DA.
Thank you, thank you. Other Commissioners? Commissioner Gammblin?
I guess this is the first time that I've heard that we've had a parity in the judges' pay if we don't do this four percent increase for the complete salary. I would, I support Commissioner Otte that we should be only giving the four percent on the county's supplemental proportion, but...
I said parity when we do law enforcement with the sheriff as a constitutional officer, and when we do our police and fire, we include the sheriff for parity among all law enforcement. And I'm just saying the same thing should apply to the judges, because if they don't get the four percent on their full salary, you'll have state court judges and municipal court judges or whoever, not municipal magistrate court, like you were saying, of lesser courts, making more than our Superior Court judges. So, I'm just saying, I support parity among the judges as well as what we do for law enforcement.
And all I'm saying is, this is the first time I've heard that we've got, you know, unequal pay going on here. So, again, I support Commissioner Otte that we should only be giving the supplemental, the four percent to the supplemental, not the complete pay.
Okay, all right, thank you. Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. There was a statement you made that provided some Board of Commissioners pay for the judges' full salary?
The Board of Commissioners, I'll use a state court for an example. The entire pay of state court judges is set by the Board of Commissioners. They're a county-paid employee because the state court was created as such. So, you, when you give a, either a merit or cost of living increase to a county employee, that entire salary is based on that four percent increase. If you were just to give the four percent on the county portion of a Superior Court judge, it would be less than forty, around forty percent, less than forty percent, based on the four percent, which means that the state court judges would continue to encroach upon the salary of a Superior Court judge. And over a number of years, if that were to continue, they would actually outdistance the salary of a Superior Court judge. And the same thing with the district attorney.
Okay. And the state sets the salary for the Superior Court judges, that base salary?
That's correct. There's a base salary for all Superior Court judges. I think there's two hundred and twelve statewide and all district attorneys.
And then the increased amount that's paid by the county, that was determined by the county, or was that determined?
Up until 2014, the supplement paid to Superior Court judges and the district attorney was set by the legislature, the state legislature that was sponsored by our local delegation. And that's why I gave the history.
A supplement paid to the base pay?
Yes.
Had to be determined, why wouldn't the state just increase the base pay?
Well, in 2014, that authority was transferred to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
And one of the reasons, Commissioner, that that was, and it was a good argument, was that in years past, and I used to hear it all the time when I was in my other position, we'd go down to the legislature, we'd try to include the Board of Commissioners, but based on the political atmosphere or whatever, we, the Board of Commissioners were saying, "The legislature is setting financial burdens on us that we have no control over."
I see.
So, in 2014, the legislature passed an act saying the Board of Commissioners should set that, and that's why we're here today.
Okay. Certainly can understand the concerns from some of the Commissioners regarding these nuances, but listening to them, I can understand why we're in the situation that we're in. And we weren't necessarily engaged in that front end to determine that base salary and supplement to determine the amount, nor are we in the legislature to be able to change that process. We're dealing with the end product of it and having to respond. And in this, I lean towards Commissioner Burrow's response to create some, I don't necessarily say parity, but to have a, the same approach to the salaries today that we have had in the past, as far as recognizing the full pay, and also recognizing that desire for there to be some difference between the state court and Superior Court pay, that if we don't honor it, we're going to have to deal with those issues in the future. And we certainly want to be supportive of our court system. I think there's some desire to take a different look at this when we provide, when we provide a next merit increase. I don't know what that would look like. At that point, I'd like to probably delve a little bit more in the history and try to understand a little bit more of what you shared here today. But today, I'm leaning towards supporting it. At the end of the day, this is about serving our constituents, and we're fortunate to have the number of Superior Court judges that we do have, and we appreciate their level of service. And it is for that service that merit has been awarded to our employees, and so I'm apt to support that today. Again, just wanting to understand a little bit more about the history that you provided moving forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid, I just, a little bit of the history, I was here when all this happened. And up until 2014, the salaries that were set by the state, those individuals, those constitutional officers, were very successful in going down to the legislature and getting their pay raised and having the Commission told you're going to raise their pay. And it was a huge burden on the county, especially in light of the recession. And so, ultimately, the only reason it was changed was because the county commission raised a huge stink about the fact that, you know, you are setting financial obligations to the county. The problem is that we have a state function, and it is no different, and we have seen this in DOT, for example, Upper Roswell Road, State Route 120 is a state highway. They will come and cut the median once every sixty days. And they don't really care what it looks like in between. And their answer to us is, "Well, if you want it to look better, you're going to have to cut it." That's not our job. And what's happening is that, yes, the Superior Court judges should get a raise, but it should be, the state should take responsibility for a state constitutional officer. What they're doing is they're passing down to the citizens of Cobb to have to cover the cost because they're not willing to give the raise. I mean, you know, the county supplement? Absolutely, it's a county supplement. But, you know, the more that the county takes on of the state responsibilities, the less they're going to be responsible for. And until the county pushes back and says, "No, we're not going to do it," because guess what happens? Superior Court judges can go back downtown and tell the state, you know, "Hey, we're not getting paid enough." And all the same arguments that Mr. Sharon is so eloquently talking about, that state court judges paid by the county are going to get more money. The Superior Court judges, that's something the state needs to be dealing with. And the more that we push it under the carpet by covering the cost, the state's not going to take the responsibility for the things they need to take responsibility for. And I know the chairman has said that, you know, he's going to let the delegation know, but at some point in time, it's got to stop. You know, it took until 2014 to get the legislature to stop making the financial obligations to the county, and here we are, five years later, still dealing with the same situation that we dealt with in 2014, forward. And so, I just think that, you know, at some point in time, we've got to tell the state enough.
I agree with you on many points, and for me, it's just a matter of timing. Because as you shared, this is not the only matter where we felt as if the county has had to bear the brunt of a state decision. But in the meanwhile, we have judges who are serving Cobb County citizens who are going to have to face the repercussion of us not fulfilling this agenda item. And so, I agree with you wholly. I just think that a step would be to follow up with the legislature when we, when we do meet with them this year, and let them know about our concerns about this, and also talk to our other county peers and see if they have the same concerns, so it's not just Cobb County going down there, so that we can have the strength of other counties in making this request, which I think would strengthen it. But I don't think I'm willing to hold our judges over a barrel because of an issue that we have with the state and not with them directly.
One last question, Tom. How many other counties pay a county supplement to this Superior Court judges?
All of, all of the metro counties pay. I don't have an exact number. I know Augusta and Macon also pays supplements. All of the metro Atlanta counties have supplements at varying degrees. So, I would say probably out of the forty-nine circuits, probably a good third to forty percent pays some supplements.
My presumption is, I'm sorry, Chairman. My presumption is it's based off a population, which may make us be an outlier, because if there were a set Superior Court judge salary across the state, some would say that's not fair because of the difference in burden that some of them may have as far as caseload is concerned.
That's, that's correct. In the rural areas, and I've been there trying cases, and they all work hard, the Superior Court judges, but they don't have anywhere near the caseload per capita that our judges do in the metro area.
Okay, this is the way I look at it. This, this is Cobb, it's a family. The judges are part of that family, and, you know, it's kind of like when you have kids go to school, they all get scholarships from different places to help out for the family, in this case here. I'm committed to bringing this, this issue to the delegation in December, but I don't think it's, I don't think it's fair to the judges, and I agree, I couldn't have said it any better than Commissioner Cupid did. They carry, they carry significant load. They are part of the quality of services that we bring to this county. They, they carry, they carry their fair share of the burden by doing their job. And who knew that a four percent merit raise would create this much controversy? You know, if I, it's amazing that we have the resources to do this, we have the best judges in the state, and I think that right now here, we should make sure, the message we send to everybody, no matter where you work in Cobb County, we consider you part of the family, and we'll work out, you know, how we're going to compensate you, because sometimes we're mandated to do certain things, and sometimes we take that burden on ourselves. But I don't believe that we should hold the Superior Court judges payback right now because we haven't, you know, the sentiment seems to be changing about this, but nonetheless, we have an agreement in the past. This is the first merit raise we've had in, what, four or five years? So, I think that the argument that Commissioner Cupid says and the parity that issue that Commissioner Burrow brings up here carries weight for me, so I'm going to support this issue. So, with that, I call the question. The pass is three to two with Commissioner Gammblin and Otte in opposition.
Thank you, Commissioners, appreciate it.
Okay, DOT.
We have six items for consideration this morning. The first item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with W. Contracting Company, Inc., in an amount not to exceed fifty-eight thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars for the demolition of two structures located at nine sixty-eight Kennesaw Avenue and nine seventy-two Kennesaw Avenue for the construction of the Old Forty-one Highway Project.
Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve.
Discussion, call the question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our second item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Baldwin Paving Company, Inc., in an amount not to exceed seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and eighty-four cents for intersection improvements on Factory Shoals Road at Riverside Parkway.
Commissioner Cupid?
So moved.
Discussion, call the question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. The next item is asking for the Board of Commissioners to approve a contract with Lawson Enterprises, LLC, in an amount not to exceed three hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty cents for operational improvements at Factory Shoals Road at Harmony Leland and Clay Elementary Schools, Phase One.
Commissioner Cupid?
So moved.
Discussion?
Looking forward to this.
Yes, ma'am.
Looking forward to this.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
With the school there, it's going to help them, but it's going to help the whole community.
Yes, ma'am.
Yep, thank you.
The question's been called. Passes five to zero.
Okay, thank you, sir. The next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a preliminary engineering agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway Company, in an amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars for preliminary engineering, a railroad quiet zone improvements at Nicket Jack Road.
Commissioner Cupid?
Thank you, also looking forward to this item, and I have some assurances that this will relate to the Church Street Railroad crossing as well.
We're in coordination with that one also.
Wonderful. With that, move to approve, agenda item number twenty-nine.
Discussion, call the question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. The next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution in support of the Cumberland Community Improvement District submission of a transportation improvement program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for Cumberland Core Loop segments A and C. Segments A and C.
Commissioner Odd.
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. And then the last item we have for consideration, we made a slight revision to in the background of the document. Just clarifying that we are working with both the Cumberland CID and the City of Smyrna on this project. And with that, we would like to request that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution in support of the Cumberland Community Improvement District submission of a transportation improvement program grant application to the Atlanta Regional Commission for Cobb Parkway Pedestrian Bridge.
Commissioner Odd.
So moved. And just kind of a note about this, this is really a total project between the Cumberland CID and the City of Smyrna. The county is just moving it forward because of the classification that the county has with the IRC.
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you have a second? If you have a second? Discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Public Services? Good morning, Jimmy.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. Our first item this morning is for the Board to approve the ranking of top qualified firms to develop construction documents and provide construction administration at Violet F. Stout Park. Earlier this year, the Board approved the master plan for this park and an RFQ for the services was advertised. The proposals were received and reviewed, rendering the following ranking: Pond &amp; Company number one, Wood Environment and Infrastructure Improvement number two, and Loos Design number three. Therefore, we ask the Board of Commissioners to approve the ranking of the top qualified firms to develop construction documents for Violet F. Stout and to authorize negotiations with Pond &amp; Company.
Commissioner Cupid. Discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Our next item is for the Board to approve a contract with Atlanta Productions Incorporated, DBA Music Matters Production, in an amount not to exceed $253,587.43 to provide and install sound system equipment, power distribution, and related cabling at the Mabel House Barnes Amphitheater. Therefore, we ask the Board to approve the contract, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the documents.
Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, I'm excited about this item here. It's going to save a lot of people a lot of time and money. And you actually did note in the impact statement that this will result in savings to our operational budget for parks.
Our budget is very excited about this.
Very sure. With that, I move that we approve this agenda item.
Second.
Second. Discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Our next item is for the Board to approve a contract with W. Contracting Company Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $126,657 for selective demolition services to remove failing acoustical dampening material at the Jim R. Miller Park Outdoor Arena. So we're asking that the Board approve the contract, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the documents.
Commissioner Cupid.
So moved.
Discussion? A comment? Okay, sure.
I just want to thank Deputy Chief and Jimmy and your staff for working with myself and the chairman and former Congressman Barr to address our concerns about the privacy of the data and working out with FLOC to get the similar agreement that we have with vigilance.
We'll move that comment to the next agenda.
You can say it again, though, if you'd like it.
So Commissioner Cupid, do you still have the motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second? And now we'll vote.
Okay. Our final item this morning is for the Board to approve a contract with FLOC Safety, in an amount not to exceed $182,000 to provide 26 automatic license plate readers in 13 parks. Included in this contract are the cameras, the installation, system integration, and a four-year agreement for cloud hosting, cellular service, and continual software upgrades. Use of this data collected by the cameras is only accessible by Cobb Police Department and will be governed by the Cobb Police Department's Policy 3.09 regarding license plate readers. So we ask that the Board approve the contract, authorize the corresponding budget transfers, and authorize the Chairman to execute the documents.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved.
And I do want to thank Commissioner Odd for allowing us to digest this a bit more. I was actually at a Cobb Barr meeting where we had a speaker speak about the concerns about data being shared through these devices. So first, I was gung ho about moving this forward because we do have a need in our parks for additional monitoring of it. But I can certainly understand the need to balance that with making sure data's being kept private, so.
And I'm really proud of how Public Safety and Jimmy worked together to do their homework and made this, you know, made us a better, more informed board, because this was a sensitive issue. And I think we assure the Congressmen that we appreciate the sensitivity to protecting information and do all we can to protect it.
Yes.
So with that, I'll call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, County Manager. Property man has four items. Our first is the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Unified Technology Systems in the amount of not to exceed $165,853.65 for the purchase and installation of data equipment for the public safety training project located at 2435 East West Connector Osteal, a 2016 SPOLOSH program X-1050, and authorize a corresponding budget transactions.
Commissioner Cupid. Discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
All right, thank you. Our second, the Board of Commissioners authorize a purchase of electrical equipment from Gray Bar Electric Company Incorporated, in an amount not to exceed $60,846.26 for the Public Safety Training Center project located at 2435 East West Connector Osteal, a 2016 SPOLOSH program X-1050, and authorize a corresponding budget transaction.
Commissioner Cupid.
So moved.
Discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
All right, thank you. Our third item, the Board of Commissioners authorize a purchase of Cisco's networking equipment from Sovereign Systems, LLC, in an amount not to exceed $250,230.37 for the Public Safety Training Center located at 2435 East West Connector Osteal, a 2016 SPOLOSH program X-1050, and authorize a corresponding budget transactions.
Discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
And our last, the Board of Commissioners approve the initial phase of a two-part contract with John W. Sprattland &amp; Son, LLC, in the amount of $547,277 for the construction management risk services for the general condition and contractor's fee to build a replacement fire station seven located at 850 Hurt Road, Osteal, a 2016 SPOLOSH program X-1022, authorize a corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the Chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Cupid.
It is District Four Day today.
Yes, it is.
Yes, so moved. Greatful to see that.
Any questions? Call a question. Passes five to zero. Thank you, Scott.
All right, thank you, sir.
Morning, Board. Chairman and County Manager. This comes as a joint item between Director Crowder and myself. I ask that the Board of Commissioners authorize the First Amendment to the lease agreement with LGE Community Credit Union to lease the property located at 430 Commerce Drive Southeast for the purchase of certain furniture and equipment at a purchase price of $75,000 to be paid through an offset in future rental payable under the lease as further provided and attached First Amendment to the lease agreement. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the Chairman to execute all necessary documents and take all other actions necessary or appropriate to accomplish the foregoing purposes. As y'all know, we purchased the LGE building for our future public safety headquarters, and we're getting to the point where LGE will be moving out and we will be moving in. And this was a great benefit to us to be able to purchase this furniture. That's really new furniture. And Public Safety's been through the facility. They love what they've seen. They've picked it out. There's some stuff we didn't take because we didn't like, we didn't need. But majority of it is going to be a great benefit to us.
Okay, with that, Commissioner Burl.
Just one other thing I'd like to add is, when we purchased this, they're still there and paying a lease, a monthly lease, to us, which goes back into the SPOLOSH that was set aside for this project, for building the project.
That's exactly right. That money goes back into the project.
So with that SPOLOSH money from the lease payments, we are able to purchase the equipment on site.
That is correct.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Discussion? Call a question. Passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I believe we have no further public comments. Is that correct? Okay, I believe Commissioner Burl has an announcement?
Yes. Sorry, I would like to announce the reappointment of Carlton Stock to the Neighborhood Safety Commission for a three-year term to expire on September 30th, 2022.
Good, thank you. And maybe that's the only appointment. And now Commissioner comments. Commissioner Odd.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I just have two. The first one, the Dickerson Middle School Percussion Ensemble. Did we get the picture, Brad?
There they are.
There they are. Has been recognized as a winner of the Percussive Arts Society International Percussion Ensemble Competition. I didn't even have to loosen the tie. And will perform a showcase concert at the Percussive Arts Society International Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana on November 16th of this year. The Percussive Arts Society International Convention, PASIC, is the largest percussion convention in the world with over 5,000 attendees annually. PASIC features over 120 concerts, clinics, master classes, labs, workshops, panels, and presentations given by the finest artists from around the world and showcasing all areas of percussion: drum set, marching keyboards, symphonic world, recreational, educational, music technology, new music, health and wellness. The Dickerson Percussion Ensemble is the only middle school percussion ensemble in the nation to have received invitations to perform for each of the three major invitation-only performance opportunities. The three of them are the Music for All National Percussion Festival, and they went there in 2010, 2014, and 2018, the Midwest International Band and Orchestra Clinic in 2014, and then PASIC this year. So obviously extremely proud of the students at Dickerson and their students, their parents, and the teachers, and wanted to share this exciting news. My last one, and she has managed to avoid this for about a month and a half, Sharon, come on up. She snuck out on me the last time, so. Yeah, I know you tried, but. Up there. So the Cobb InFocus magazine from July, August, that's how long she's avoided this, you will see Sharon's picture on the front cover. And the article is about one of our finest, Cobb's Women in Technology: Making a Difference. I'm going to read some stuff to you. I have always loved math and technology. After spending 21 years in the military, thank you for your service, 10 in the Navy, we don't hold that against you, working on anti-sub warfare, Sharon attended grad school earning a master's in information systems from Naval Postgraduate School and a master's in national security and strategic studies from Naval Command and Staff College. At the end of her naval career, she worked for Sprint, McKesson, and then came to Cobb County. Sharon has been our Director of Information Services for five years. She works with every agency to develop programs for the good of the citizens. Her team has instituted for DOT, Cobb Commute, 911, and emergency managements to install smart trail markers, Board of Elections to create an app to help people learn about early voting, and so much more. She and her team have been highly recognized at ESRI and have received many awards for the innovative programs and maps. So congratulations to Sharon.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
You can say something if you want.
I'll make it real quick, and that's unusual. It really is. For everything here, I've got the best team I've ever worked with. I love Cobb. Best job I've ever had, best team I've ever had. I couldn't be any happier with this. I love the place, so.
And go Navy, beat Army.
Yes.
No. No. Chairman, give up on this. Not the Army. It's okay, Navy's going to be powered up too. I'd first like to say thank you to everyone who donated for Cobb's Diaper Day last week. Thanks to your generosity, over 125,700 diapers were collected this year, and that is a record. Over the last 11 years since the first Diaper Day, we've collected over a million diapers donated by this community. So thank you to Cobb Diaper Day Committee and a special shout out to our dear friend, Barbara Hickey, who started this 11 years ago. On October 26th, we'll have our next medical disposal day. I did. I sent it to Kelly. Okay, Kelly's going to announce that. Do you have the slide?
Right has it.
You just told me to do it.
She changed her mind.
Okay. I thought Kelly was going to. This year, we have two locations, at Precinct One on Cobb Parkway and at Freeman Pool Senior Center. You can go to Keep Cobb Beautiful for more information and what will be accepted. This is a great event, and it gets bigger and bigger every year. So we've opened up a second location at Freeman Pool. And tonight is our 2019 How to Do Business with Cobb Seminar at the Wellness Center, Powder Springs. And we have over 115 registered. So it starts at 5:00, 5:00 to 5:30 registration. So it's a sellout. And last but not least, on Wednesday, October 30th, we will be hosting the State Department of Community Affairs, I'm sorry, State Department of Veterans Affairs and the Consulate General of the Republic of Korea to honor and thank our Korean War veterans. So we have over 100 signed up so far, and we ask that you come and celebrate with us 2:00, October 30th, at the Cobb Civic Center. Thank you.
Commissioner? Commissioner Gamble.
Thank you. And I would like to remind everybody of our first Gamble's Great Pumpkin Day coming up on October 26th. It is the great pumpkin.
Ignore him. You can.
We're going to have a pumpkin done in your honor, Bob. It's to benefit Safe Path Children's Advocacy Center. It'll be from 10:00 to 7:00 PM at Still Family Farms, and we hope you come join us there. And then also a reminder that tonight at 6:00 PM, the Parks Board will be meeting to review the master plans for Anderson Road, Kemp Park, and also Price Parks. This meeting is open to the public starting at 6:00 PM at the West Cobb Senior Center.
Thank you. Commissioner Cupid?
That event looks great, Kelly.
Yeah, it does.
Yes. Just want to let everybody know about one of my favorite times of the year, and it's when we have the large book sale here in Cobb County, and that starts this Friday. Want to encourage those who are interested in sprucing up their library to head out to the Cobb Civic Center. The hours will be 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM Friday and Saturday, and 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM on Sunday. And I think on Sunday, yes, it's Bring Your Own Box Day, so you can actually fill up the box and get one blanket price for a number of books. You hate to wait till Sunday because most of the good stuff is gone, but if you do wait, you can get a pretty good deal. So just encourage you to come and attend that event. You will see me there, but I will not look like my typical self. I usually have a brim head on, and I'm about my business when I get out there. But thank you, Cobb Libraries, for doing that every year, or twice every year.
Okay, thank you. I'd like us all, just to take a brief moment, to remember Chairman Tim Lee, who passed away unfortunately at a very, very young age, and genuinely- I'm genuinely sad to see, to see him pass so early. And the Board has expressed our deepest sympathy and condolences to his family and friends. So we just take a moment of silence for Tim today, I would appreciate it. May he rest in peace. The North Georgia Fair set a record of three hundred and forty-five thousand people. And the night that I was there, I think three hundred thousand of them were there. It was amazing, it was absolutely amazing. So my hat's off to the State For, to the, to the Board and all the Public Safety. It was just amazing how many people came to this fair this year. It's, just says a lot about what's going on in Cobb right now. And my hat's off to everyone who made that such a successful fair, and all those who went also. Also, to note in sadness, the longest-serving Recreation Board member of twenty-seven years, Paul Lee, passed away at ninety-three years of age. And that just goes to show you that nobody retires anymore. Paul served up to, almost to the end of his time here on this, on this temporal heaven. And we're just glad all he did for us to make this county great. I also wanna give a big shout out to what Commissioner Cupid said about the book sale. My lot, my suggestion is get there early, there's some really good deals there. Well, and if you see someone in a brim hat, that's her. And then finally, a big shout out again to all the Public Safety personnel in Cobb County who make this a county where you can safely work, live, play, and pursue your dreams. So thank you all for that, and thank you for all it to do for us in the future. And with that, let's take a ten-minute break. Absolutely, yeah, thank you for reminding me. They are really making this exciting, and at my age, I don't need excitement. So let's go Braves, absolutely. All right, with that, let's take a short break. We have a hearing here for the alcohol beverage license issue.